It's time to wake up. It's time to wake up. At the break of dawn and it's on again, ready to get ready to climb back on the land. Come on, man, shake the dust off the moon. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter, right to fly and make it end with the way you give it all you got. First, you gotta rise like alert in the light, pick the dirt from your eyes and work on the prize. Get it done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man, don't get snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick tock, let's go. Tick tock, tick tock, come on. Tick tock, tick tock. You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive.
Thank you, Dr. Wesley. Dr. David Craig, pastor of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church of Fairfield, Alabama, wasn't able to join us this morning. So we really appreciate you taking up the challenge and leading us in our invocation this morning. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman. Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Good morning. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Counsel, the minutes are not ready for the August 6th, 2024 through September 3rd, 2024 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin. Good morning, sir.
Mr. President, good morning. Good morning to the entire council. And good morning to the public. It's good to see everyone this morning. Mr. President and counsel, just have a few notes. The purchase regarding recycling, I want to start by thanking all of you, including your two colleagues who are not here, for continuing to champion this issue, which I know you all are very passionate about. And so with that, our new recycling program kicks off this Wednesday, that is tomorrow, September 11th. September 11th. Four thousand five hundred new recycling bins have been delivered to residents who signed up to participate in the second phase of this program. All the recipients were emailed and notified, again, that this Wednesday, tomorrow, marks the official kickoff of the new system. The email included details about the program and what can be recycled and what cannot. Just as a reminder to you all, as well as the public and those mainly, and mainly for those participating, recycling pickup takes place on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. Again, recycling takes place on the first and third Wednesdays of each month. Those who are already recycling with their bins prior to this rollout, please continue putting your carts out as usual. That is worth repeating. Again, those who are already recycling there, who were already recycling with their bins prior to this rollout, please continue to put your carts out as usual. And for more information, you can go to birminghamal.gov/recycle. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/recycle to receive more information about recycling and the program. Of note, the Magic City Classic tailgate slots will go on sale this Thursday, September 12th. The sale begins at 12:01 PM. I think you all know it goes extremely fast. Those wanting to secure slots should go to birminghamal.gov/parks-and-recreation. I don't like that website. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/parks-and-recreation. And click on the tailgate flyer. Note, the link will not be live until 12:01 PM this Thursday. And for my last note, I told you it'll be quick today. At this time, I would like Caroline Douglas, as well as all the Land Bank Board of Directors and staff, to please join me at the podium as we publicly share a proclamation related to Birmingham Land Bank. So, Mr. President. Mr. President and counsel, before you is Ms. Caroline Douglas, her staff, as well as the Board of Directors for the Land Bank. As a reminder, the Land Bank Authority was established with the mission, with the mission to serve the citizens of Birmingham by working collaboratively and transparently with community stakeholders, and the city of Birmingham to address the stewardship and management of vacant abandoned, as well as tax delinquent properties. Today, we join them, Ms. Douglas and her team, as well as the board, in celebrating a decade of service with a special proclamation. I will read in part. And it states, whereas the efforts of the Birmingham Land Bank Authority have contributed to the increase in overall property values within the city of Birmingham, while successfully returning numerous properties to the tax rolls, positively impacting the city's economy and future growth. And whereas Birmingham Land Bank Authority celebrates ten years of service, it stands as a testament to the vision and dedication of its staff and partners, who have remained committed to reducing blight and transforming vacant and abandoned properties into vibrant, productive spaces for the benefit of all Birmingham residents. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby recognize and commend the Birmingham Land Bank Authority and the city of Birmingham for ten years of exemplary service, dedication, and commitment to the betterment of our community. And at this time, Mr. President and counsel, I would like to ask Ms. Caroline Douglas to share a few words.
Good morning, everyone. It is always an honor to come before you. I thank Mayor Woodfin and I thank each of you for your support and also for your acknowledgement of the Birmingham Land Bank. Ten years ago, the Birmingham City Council incorporated the Birmingham Land Bank. And it was ten years ago when Attorney Jim Stanley walked into my office and handed me a book by the Center for Community Progress, asking me to read this book that talks about how land banks across the country are transforming neighborhoods. We had the big job of putting together the Birmingham Land Bank. I never thought that ten years later, I would be standing here with the team that we have and the board that we have, who do this tireless work monthly and daily. So I would love to introduce my board, who you may never see, but I know that you know them. And I would like them to introduce themselves to you. And then I would also like to introduce my team. We have with us Chelsea Law, she's our Public Relations Coordinator. Every creative effort that we have has come out of her brain. And together, we do this work. So Lemonade with the Land Bank, our latest community engagement effort, was an idea that she had, and we had a chance to bring that to life. We intend to do that annually. Then we have Ms. Kimberly Warren. Ms. Kimberly Warren has almost twelve years of service with the city of Birmingham. She is our Administrative Assistant. If you ever call our office, she is the first voice that you will hear. And like I always say, you hear her smile always. Then we have Ms. Montrice, I want to call her Danielle so bad. Montrice Daniels. Montrice Service is her middle name. If you ever need anything, she's always willing to serve. We also have Ms. Carrie Underwood, who has the difficult task of holding our property buyers accountable, making sure they finish what they said they're going to do. And then we have Mr. Richardson. Mr. Armon Richardson has never met a stranger, ever, never, ever met a stranger. And he's truly the heartbeat of our team. We'll start with our chairman, Dr. Lonnie Hannan. I'd like for him to introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lonnie Hannan, and I am chairman of this esteemed board of the Birmingham Land Bank Authority.
Jessica Bennett, Secretary of the Birmingham Land Bank Board.
Brad Green, no special title, just glad to be on the board.
My name is Lloyd Watson, Jr. I'm the Vice Chair of Land Bank Authority.
Together, we're doing this work. And as we started with selling properties, we have turned and pivoted to transforming neighborhoods, one house at a time, through our accelerated homeownership program. It's a feat for us, but this is the direction that we're heading, and we believe that it's going to be majorly successful, particularly starting in the Fountain Heights community. So join us. Join us tonight as we talk to other land bank leaders. We are not the only land bank in Alabama, but we are a very shining star in Alabama. We will be sitting down with Fairfield, Bessemer, and Gadsden. And we are celebrating ten years in Birmingham, and we look forward to ten more. Thank you.
Counselor Smithman.
Thank you. I had the very esteemed pleasure of having Land Bank under my previous committee, the PIC, and I think I appointed two or three of you all. But I really want to thank you all for what you do, especially you, Attorney Douglas, because now we are the model for other states to look at having a land bank. I know we were on a call about a year or two ago, and Counselor, I don't know if you're on there, but there are a few other of us there, asking us how we do it. And I know taking on those tax delinquent properties and those abandoned properties that really are of blight in our community and really bringing down the property value and really being able to make it more affordable for people. I really want to thank you for that work. And always being accommodating to talk to a resident as well, because I know I've had to call you all a couple of times, be like, hey, I need you to talk to this resident. So I really want to thank you. And I really, whatever you all need, just let us know. I know we are, and thank you, Mayor Woodfin, because we asked for an increase in the budget for you all a year or two ago, and they helped you all significantly. And we've done state law work to move that process along for y'all to get a lot of houses off of the tax delinquency. So thank you and congratulations on ten years.
Thank you. Mayor Woodfin, do you have any other announcements? All right, thank you. Counsel, without objection, I want to pause to recognize some special guests that we have with us this morning. As you may know, several years ago, Mayor Woodfin created the Birmingham Promise Program. And this year, the council has the distinguished pleasure of actually being able to work with some of the Birmingham Promise folk kids or young adults as interns. So this morning, we wanted to take a moment to recognize them. Administrator Kid or Jeff McDaniels. Are you able to assist us, or do we just want to ask the individuals to come up? So some of the, so we have several interns that are going to be working with us this, over the next several weeks. Pretty much one per office, and they represent various high schools throughout the city. They'll be attending council meetings and public hearings and other relevant events. They'll be monitoring the legislative actions of the council. And they'll also, of course, be working closely with the district offices and our public information team and just really learning through a work experience. And this is not going, only going to be beneficial for them from a work experience standpoint, but also helping them learn about government and how to be civically engaged. So at this time, we'll allow you guys to introduce yourself.
Good morning. My name is Antoria Gray. I attend Ramsey High School, and I'm a senior.
All right. Which office will you be working with?
District Six.
District Six, all right.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Sarai Pleger. I'm a senior at Ramsey High School, and I'm working in the city's attorney's office.
All right, great.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rebecca Manuel. I attend Wolon High School, and I'm with Latonya Tate.
Good morning. My name is Amaya Davis. I attend Winona High School. I'm a senior, and I will be working with District Five.
Awesome.
Good morning. My name is Sean Nash. I'm a senior at Winona High School, and I'll be working with District Eight.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Thompson. I'm a senior at Ramsey, I'll be at high school. I'm working with Counselor Woods and his team, and I'm glad to be here.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Dixon. I'm a senior at Ramsey High School, and I work with Councilmember Moore in District Four.
Excellent. Counselor Moore?
Yeah, and I'll just say, it's actually a really cool moment, because Mr. Joseph actually used to be a member over at AG Gaston Boys and Girls Club. And so had a chance to see him when he was a lot shorter than me. But he's towering over me now, so this is, this is cool.
Yeah. So, you know, not only did we want to recognize these individuals, you know, because we're going to be spending the next several weeks with them, but we also wanted to highlight the, once again, highlight the Birmingham Promise Program and encourage employers throughout the metro area to please give and get involved and give these young people an opportunity to gain some valuable work experience while they're continuing their education. I think, you know, the Birmingham Promise Program has been amongst, you know, the more impactful programs that's been created while I've been in office, certainly. And, but it only works with, if folks are actively engaged. It's been, you know, hugely successful thus far. But we definitely want to encourage employers to get involved and stay engaged, because this is really something that, you know, makes a lifetime of difference for the individuals who benefit from it. All right, thank you. And this time, we'll move on with our council meeting. So I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated as, designated for public hearing, may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clerk, at this time, could we read over our consent agenda items?
Consent agenda starts on page two with item three. We skip over to page 10. We have items four, five, six, and seven on consent. Page 11, items eight, nine, 10, and 11 are on consent. Page 12, items 12, 13, 14, and 15 are on consent. Page 13, items 16, 18, and 19 are on consent. Page 14, items 20 and 21 are on consent. Please note on item number 20, the GL code should change to IO, and the code is 001, that's 003, that's 0094, that's 0545001. That's IO. Page 15, back up with the consent agenda with items 22, 23, and 24. Please note that item 24 is recommended by Budget and Finance. Page 16, items 25, 26, and 27 are on consent. Page 17, items 28, 29, 30, and 31 are on consent. Page 18, items 32, 33, 34, and 35 are on consent. Page 19, items 36, 37, 38, and 39 are on consent. Page 20, items 40, 41, and 42 are on consent. Page 21, items 43, 44, 45, and 46 are on consent. Page 22, items 47, 48, 49, and 50 are on consent. Page 23, items 51, 52, 53, and 54 are on consent. Please note that on item 51, the amount should be added after Rescue Department on the third line, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. That's in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. That's for item 51. And we conclude the consent agenda with items 55, 56, 57, 58, and 59 on page 24.
Okay. At this time, do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that item number 19 on page 13 be removed from consent.
Okay. Any others? I'd like to remove item 52 on page 23. Okay. We also have several items marked as public hearing. Do any of the members of the audience wish to remove any of those public hearing items from the consent agenda? Hearing done. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Motion.
Or we need a motion? Smithman and Moore?
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
We want to take an item out of order, so I'm going to ask that we go with number 19 first, please.
Item 19. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation Incorporated, and the amount not to exceed $370,000, under which Cornerstone will provide services to the city by implementing the District Eight Housing Rehabilitation Program, which will provide major and minor repairs to up to 13 houses to revitalize the community, reduce blight, and increase property values for qualified low and moderate income homeowners residing in Council District Eight. Motion, please.
Abbott and Smithman, Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The reason I asked for this item be removed, I just wanted to bring note to the work that the Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation does for residents on the western side. And so Counselor Clark is not here today, but this is one of her projects that she's bringing housing rehab, rehab, rehabilitation or rehabilitation to the district. So just wanted to make the public aware of the work that's being done, and thank you. That's just it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And please note my extension.
Okay, one second here.
All right. That item is approved. Now we can go back to item number one, please.
All right, one second, please. All right. Item one, it's on page two. Appeal hearing on behalf of Live Development LLC on denial of an application and permit to develop an automated car wash facility located at 2310, 2312, and 2316 8th Avenue, South Birmingham, Alabama, and of course, with ordinance number 24-15, adopted by the council on March the 5th, 2024.
All right. We need a motion on this item? I'm sorry? It's neutral, okay, all right. So this is an appeal, appeal hearing. It's the Office of the City Attorney, want to give us an introduction?
I'll have Attorney Julie Bernard come forth.
Sorry. Again, Julie Bernard, I serve as Assistant City Attorney in the Office of City Attorney, and this is an appeal that is filed by someone who desires to construct an automated car wash. My understanding is on University Boulevard is the location. And I will let them present to you. We have, I don't think they're in the room, but if we need, we have at least Department of Transportation, and perhaps BDOT if they're needed to, I mean, yes, if they, yeah, Department of Transportation and Planning, Engineering, and Permits, I apologize, if they are needed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Make sure we get all our technology right here. There we go. Good morning, the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this morning. I think each of you have a hard copy of what we're going to show you on the screen. So appreciate your time, humbled that we're available to be in front. My name is Thomas Spies. I'm the president of Live Development and Live Ventures, which is a Birmingham-based development company. With me today is Wilson Moore, is my Director of Development, and our counsel, Crystal Walls, from Dentons and Serodi, is also here. We are here in the interest of our car wash brand, New Day Car Wash, which is a local startup brand, not a national chain, not a franchise, founded by folks from Birmingham, operated by folks from Birmingham, built by folks from Birmingham. We've had the opportunity to speak to many of you directly, either on Teams meetings, Zooms meetings, by phone, others for one reason or another have not, but, and through staff. But certainly appreciate all you, the time you've given us. We're in front of you today pursuant to Section 3 of the moratorium. Live Development has the property on University. Under contract to purchase, this appeal is being filed with the consent of the current fee owner. Upon acquisition, we plan to develop the property for an automatic tunnel car wash, similar to our development on Cohaba River Road in Vestavia. Members of the Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department have visited that site so we could show them what we build. We like to say in our office that not all car washes are created equal. And we're really proud of what we build and the products and services that we provide. In pursuit of the project of the property, we began in early December 2023. We met with departments from the city, including the Birmingham Department of Transportation, Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits, and submitted our initial site plan for preliminary review. The timeline that you see in front of you on the second page of the presentation sort of gives you an outline of where it started, the meeting started, and sort of where we've gone to here. The moratorium directly suspends any further action by Live Development in pursuit of this project. The project would have, which is important, I think, to note, the project would have been otherwise permitted absent the moratorium. As such, appeal is considered to be on a case-by-case basis. We're here to present our request. The timing of the appeal here is important. We really did our best to sort of let the first moratorium run its course. Had discussions with multiple of you who said, listen, let's see with, how this thing works out. And then the second moratorium, or amended moratorium, or whatever we want to call that, came through, and we have simply just run out of time with our seller, who in this case is Truist Bank. It's the old McGriff Insurance Building and lots on University. That's owned by the bank when Truist bought McGriff. And so the extended, the extension of the moratorium, I've run out of time. And so we've obviously invested a great deal of money in third-party professionals and legal and all kinds of things to try to get this thing developed. And so we'd like to have a return on that investment and, or at least come to a conclusion here. But real quick about New Day Car Wash and Live Development. To your point that we- To your point that we are a local-based company, we have about fifty employees in Birmingham. All the ownership of New Day Car Wash is local. And we've done, uh, we're a multifamily development firm by trade, but we also do car washes. We also are partners with, uh, Longleaf Recovery and doing addiction and recovery centers, uh, throughout Alabama. We've got four addiction recovery centers, uh, and two in Birmingham, one in Huntsville, and one in Mobile. That, I think it's really important that, um, that, uh, we know that we really put our employees first. They're the ones who deliver the product that we want and, uh, to our customers. And this sort of to the line of while our car washes aren't created equal, our car wash, we're almost exclusively full-time employment. So we hire folks full-time, offer benefits. Because of our growth, we're offering real opportunities to grow, pay training, uniforms, our stock rooms are our break rooms, our stock full of food, for folks, you know, if they forget their lunch or whatever. But I think the real thing here is, is that we're not trying to ha, hire a bunch of part-time folks and not pay benefits and do the things the cheapest we can. Twelve of our fourteen employees on Cohaba are full-time, they got health insurance. Uh, I think we do things the right way and treat our folks the right way, because I think that's how we know that we're gonna treat our customers the right way. To our point that all of our in, our design of our car wash is created in-house by our creative group. We are intentionally, quite frankly, uh, the most expensive car wash to build there possibly can be. Uh, and I laugh at that because we just, we got really high expectations on for how this is gonna look and the amenities we're gonna offer. And everybody kind of, our, our competitors look at me and say, you're crazy for spending that much money to build a car wash. But, um, that's the investment we make, simple lines, clean colors. All of our properties are painted brick and have a glass storefront, which I think makes a big difference. And we feel, uh, with all due respect to the other buildings on that side of the street on University, that we'll be the best-looking building on that street by a couple of blocks. Uh, the picture you show there is our picture on Cohaba River Road in Vestavia. It's right as you turn to go to Lifetime Fitness and Publix there. Uh, we've been open since February, uh, and have already over four thousand members, uh, of our car wash. Uh, and if you, sort of, I know that you, you talked about this in your moratorium, but one of the reasons that the car wash business has changed and why you've had so many applications for car washes is the car wash business has gone to a, a membership model. So in the days of trying to get everybody to come in and buy every car wash individually, it's a membership model like a fitness center or, you know, cellphone plan or whatever else you wanna have, so that's sort of a little bit of the difference. But you can see by our wash, painted brick, flat roof, uh, uh, a lot of landscaping whenever we can, we're big into that, so, um. Some other pictures from the pay station, from our, uh, vacuum station that offers things that other washers don't, uh, don't offer. To the point of this location, this location's on University Boulevard between the Shell gas station on the corner, I'm sure you've all been by it a hundred times, or a thousand, uh, and an express tire, uh, and oil change, um, location. It is the old McGriff Insurance Building, it's been vacant, used for storage for a number of years. The parking lot's primarily unused. Half a block to the west, we have a easy money check in the cash location, we have an auto shop behind us and Wendy's, and then we have the VA parking deck directly to our east. Can't give you a better idea, the next slide will show you coming down University Boulevard, how our design would look. Coming down University, heading toward downtown, uh, with the parapet wall, the landscape, and, uh, uh, vacuums. That's the current view from the current site. We did our best to put our rendering into that location angle. Just kinda show how that would look. Again, neighboring businesses, the Express Oil on one side, um, the check-in to cash or, uh, easy money location to that direction, and then the Shell gas station and the VA deck, um, to the east. And then to the, uh, north, Ironman Auto Shop, Wendy's, and across the street, um, some older buildings there. This slide here will show you the site plan for our car wash, which I think what's most important is that we've got, um, from feedback from staff early, that we've got plenty of stacking in the lot so that we will not back up traffic onto University. Plenty of cars there, given our, you know, projected business plan there, uh, to accommodate that. Um, I think that, you know, to sort of wrap up, um, our presentation, the use is consistent with, um, automotive uses that are adjacent. I think one of the points of the moratorium was to prohibit non-conforming and inconsistent uses. I think that we, uh, we don't qualify for that. I think we are exactly the type of business that's going to be there. We actually also have letters of support, uh, in your packet from the seller and the broker, uh, on this property. The site does, our site plan does comply with the future design requirements of car washes. I believe in the plan going forward, there are, um, a number of things to talk about how far vacuums have to be and, uh, buildings have to be depending on, on the, for a car wash, the site plan will comply with that. Again, we're actively operating by local owners. As I like to say, that the last thing I wanna do on Sunday morning is show up at church and have somebody tell me what, what of my business isn't doing right. Uh, and so we run our businesses the right way. Uh, again, full-time employment, um, uh, for our team, and, um, we will improve the visual and economic image of that corridor, because that's the best-looking building on that side of the street for a number of blocks. Any questions?
So this is a, a public hearing, um, do any members of the council have questions? All right. Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Pres, Mr. President. Um, I'm looking, you know, I see, you know, where the car wash is going to be planted and, you know, it's on University Boulevard. So when the car wash reaches the capacity, how are you guys gonna, you know, other people trying to enter the car wash?
Back to the site plan. Let's go back to the site plan.
So it can be a continuous flow.
Hopefully it'll pop up here, well, there we go. So, uh, at the far east side, or excuse me, north side of the property, you'll have two pay stations at the very top. So it's a two-car stack after you get through. So, and then you've got cars stacking back to, um, to the university. But we, in our business model and our, the, the, the number of cars we're projecting to go through there, we'll never have enough to back up onto the street.
Okay, so these cars, this right here on the diagram to the right, these are cars that are in waiting?
Getting ready to wash, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Other questions? Counselor Abbott.
Thank you. There's another one of these car washes three blocks from here. Aside from the fact that you're going to have the best-looking car wash in Birmingham, why would you put a car wash three blocks from another car wash? Especially on such a busy roadway?
Well, first of all, I think that all car washes go where there's a busy roadway, right? I mean, I think the part of the business model is, is that you look for traffic count. Secondly, I would say that the, and with all due respect to my competitor, two blocks or three blocks away, it's an older facility, it's not as well-kept, doesn't give as good a wash. And so just like when every rundown fast food restaurant that is there, there's a new Whataburger or a new Chick-fil-A, or for every rundown Motel Six, there's a new Hampton Inn or Towne Place Suites. There's, every time that there's a dated car wash, there's a new one. And so we hope the council doesn't pick winners and losers here, but, um, we feel like we're just gonna provide a better product. That site, a site for a car wash doesn't necessarily generate additional traffic. I think that's one of the sort of the misnomers that maybe people get. We're, our business plan is based on the traffic that goes by University every day already, right? So we've not, we're not gonna get people to get off the Red Mountain Expressway to come get their car washed. That's just not how people behave in the car wash industry. They're gonna go by and we're on their path and they're gonna stop, and they're gonna buy a membership because they come by every day. Or they're not. And now we, will we, may we redirect some traffic on University because of the car wash on a going-home side? There might be, but you're also gonna relieve that traffic from somewhere else, so, um, but we don't, we're not, our business model is based on the twenty-two thousand cars that go past that site every day and not increasing that traffic.
Okay, so you're going to a monthly membership model?
Yes, ma'am.
What if someone's driving by and they just on a whim decide they need a car wash, do they still?
Yeah, we absolutely would love to have them. So I would say that currently, um, about sixty-five or seventy percent of the washers that we run through the Cohaba Road are members. The other thirty percent are retail customers. What we call retail customer, another, not a non-member. Some of our members, quite frankly, or we have one member who washes their car twice every day, right? So they pay one fee and they're washing their car thirty times a month, but most people wash about three times a month that are members.
They won't have paint for long on that car.
That's another misnomer about car washes, but we won't get into that today.
Yeah. That's not one of our interests. Well, what, what our interests are is increasing pedestrian and other vehicle traffic on University besides cars. So obviously, your model doesn't really match what we are trying to do in the city. How are you going to protect those pedestrians and cyclists and all the alternative people who unfortunately will be in the path of your customers?
Well, I, I think that we've, we've split the drive on purpose so that, you know, they can get halfway across. But certainly there is gonna be traffic getting out of University. The location, we originally, when we originally presented it to staff, uh, Transportation wanted us to put the, uh, entrance into the property on the rear in the alley. But the fire has said that they will not allow that, the alley's too narrow and cannot access the property from that direction because of the elevation change from the alley to the, to the lot, and then also just sort of the width for their vehicles. So that took that out, um, from the beginning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, um, a few questions. So what's, what's currently happening on the lot? Is it just, uh, just a parking lot?
It's a parking, two lot, two of the three lots are parking that are basically fenced off. Uh, and the third lot is an abandoned building, I think there's storing boxes, old McGriff files in it, but nothing.
Is it utilized as parking from where, for one of the adjacent businesses or just whoever happens to?
No, I don't, I, I'm not sure why, but no. I mean, every time I've ever been there, there've been no vehicles in the lot.
So my guess is that there are likely no jobs currently associated with that piece of property?
I think that would be a fact, yes.
Okay, so, uh, for New Day, how many folks are planning to be?
We'll have fourteen to sixteen, seventeen members, depending on how many hours each person can work, right? But, uh, we'll have two managing partners that are with us, and then twelve to fourteen staff.
Okay, and, um, will all of them be full-time or will it be a mix of full-time, part-time?
I think the, I mentioned, I think on Cohaba, twelve of our fourteen are full-time, the other two are part-time. And that's sort of, usually it's high school age kids, uh, come in and fill in when, you know, those, some hours.
All right, um, this next question will be of special interest to Counselor Abbott. There is a billboard, uh, either on or immediately adjacent to one of the parcels.
In our meeting with Counselor Abbott, she mentioned that, and I, I promised her that I would do everything I can, uh, within the limit of that billboard lease to change that. But I, without having counsel here to...
Okay.
There, I mean, but my idea is not to have it.
Okay, but it is on the parcel that you're planning to develop?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was a question for a while, because it's like, it's this close.
Yeah.
And so the survey was tough.
Counselor Abbott.
So actually the, actually the, I'm sorry to interrupt, the, the, uh, walk, uh, skywalk that you post on actually, the overhangs the other lot on the other side.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Counselor Abbott frequently reminds us that billboards are trash on a stick, so. Litter on a stick, sorry, thank you for the clarification.
It does.
All right, yeah, so, um, I'm sure that would be appreciated if you...
That's our preference, yes, sir.
Okay. I see you reference in your presentation several of the surrounding businesses. Of course, directly across University Boulevard, we have a very important project to the city in the South Town redevelopment. Has there been any feedback or, um, otherwise, um, you know, insight as to how the, the, those two properties, you know, might interplay with one another?
Well, we did, um, we did talk to one, uh, members of the, sort of, the development team involved with that early on. Uh, he knows that we were there, um, basically wished us good luck trying to get it, you know, building it. But, uh, I think more so that it wasn't on their side of the street, it wasn't an issue.
Okay.
I don't wanna speak for, I don't wanna speak for them. I just, just, that was all I can do is tell you about that conversation.
Okay. If you are allowed to proceed, what's some sort of timeline on the development, or you anticipating?
That's all to do with, uh, how long it takes me to get my site permitted, but we're, we can literally, I mean, we have financing, we have our equity, we have our design. So it's going through the municipality for design and permitting and then starting.
Okay. Um, and you said the previous use of the property was as a, a, a bank?
No, I don't believe so. I think it was an insurance, part of that McGriff Insurance.
Okay, gotcha.
Agency before, uh, before Truist bought McGriff several years ago.
So, um, is there, do you know if there's any environmental rea, remediation or anything else that needs to be?
We did Phase One on the site, uh, was recommended that a Phase Two be done. There was at one time some spill on the gas station next door. And we understand we've not done a Phase Two. We stopped the Phase Two process when the moratorium hit. So we still need to do a Phase Two on that site to make sure that the site is clean. And so any, if it's not, we'd either have to decide to either do remediation there or not do the project.
Okay, just for clarification, um, are, are you all, is the, are, are you all, uh, anticipating making a request to the city or otherwise for any type of incentive for the development?
No.
Okay.
The other thing I, I guess I'd add to that is that, um, you know, when the, when the seller, when the Truist Bank, you know, Truist Bank marketed this property for probably nine or ten months, uh, went out to market, um, the two highest offers were car washes. The next two highest offers were fast food restaurants, right? And so if there was a demand or a economic viability to put a office building or a retail on that spot, it would have been presented as an offer to build that, that site. So, uh, I would say that first. I also say that one thing I did forget was that one of the things that we, um, we do each, each month at New Day is we have a non-for-profit partner, um, that we do some fundraising with, um, different ways to do that, but in many cases, we just offer free car washes for a certain period of time, and then anybody who comes through can just donate to that cause. We've done it with, unless you and some other groups in Cohaba. So do that as part of our, that's our local connection that we get to, we get to do.
Okay. All right, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak for or against the car wash? Mr. Godby.
Um, I'm Paul Godby, president of the South Side Neighbor Association. I didn't know that this was on the agenda, so some of my materials I don't have with me, but I have turned some of this over to Counselor Quinn's office previously. but I have turned some of this over to Councilor Quinn's office previously. Uh, I met with these two gentlemen here and my concern on this was first, I was very surprised because I'd been in on the North Side-South Side Framework Plan. So this was like a big surprise to me. I had not heard of this. The second thing that's most critical is traffic flow patterns on university. Uh, where they're going to be suggesting a car wash is gonna be increasing a lot of crisscross patterns there as people turn back and forth on the lanes. There's been a number of car wrecks on Twenty-third Street in university and Twenty-fourth Street in university, one of them just within the last week, which I have pictures of. So I see a lot of traffic flow problems right here. And it's not only with this car wash, it would be with any retail development that goes in there like a fast food place. I just don't think that the traffic flow pattern here fits a retail business. And as you brought up, Councilor Quinn, the South Town Development, we have not heard anything else about the development, so that's a very unknown quality of any access to the buildings there on university on the new development. It could be another major problem coming up. If they had just chosen this location for their business somewhere like on Seventh, that was off of university, then I really couldn't say anything. But there's also the concentration of the businesses, like you said, just to take five, just write down a few blocks away from there. And on some of the internet things, um, I've seen on my postings, people have complained about the membership model because of charging too much money for the amount of that they get off of the thing. And in a casual conversation with somebody, uh, he said he was gonna hand wash his car rather than take it to a membership model, uh, car wash. And actually I have pictures of, of residents hand washing his car directly across the street from the proposed site rather than him taking it down to take five. So I don't see the car wash going here as being beneficial. Now, they may have a good business model down Kahaba River Road, but here, people coming off the Red Mountain Expressway are still very high velocity. They're wanting to go to UAB. And there's not the same concentration of residential units and shopping units that there is down there on Kahaba River Road. So I would have to say I'm not in favor of granting this appeal.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Chiefs, if, um, does PEP or BDOT, um, have any insight on to this issue? Have they, uh, offered, you know, any opinion on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We'll have, um, James Fowler come in and address your questions.
Okay.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Good, my name is James Fowler. I serve as the Director of the City's Department of Transportation. So, uh, we have had a lot of prior discussions in our department about this site, um, and, uh, and car washes generally across the city. And so, just so that you know, our department in general is not anti-car wash. Uh, car washes provide a real service and benefit, uh, but there are certain locations where they work against the safety and efficiency, uh, for people in the transportation center, uh, system in general. Downtown is one of those places, uh, and that's because car washes as a land use are unique. They, uh, people don't walk to car washes. They solely serve automobile traffic. And so, uh, even if they're diverting existing traffic that may already be downtown, they're doubling down on an auto-oriented land use system and pattern. And so we definitely want to avoid that in our downtown. And in particular, you know, I'll just acknowledge that this quadrant of our downtown historically was thought of as the automotive district. And so we see some land use patterns that are, uh, that way. But that's not the future of where we would like to head, uh, as a city, and that's reflected very specifically in the major investment right across the street in South Town, um, the Edge Hill area, where we are specifically trying to promote walkability, public transportation and cycling. And automobile traffic is the one mode of transportation that works against all other modes of transportation. And so it doesn't surprise me to, uh, hear that some of the highest, uh, purchasing demands are auto-oriented uses for the site. And that's because just on my way into work this morning, I take the expressway and southbound, getting off at the University Boulevard exit very close to the site was a long queue of traffic. So we have a lot of traffic volume that's already using that corridor. And putting in place more auto-oriented land uses only doubles down on that style of transportation and exacerbates or reinforces or entrenches us in that mode of transportation. Whereas I think we all envision a future for our city where we have great public transportation, where we, in our downtown, we have a foundation of walkability. And so doubling down in this way moves us further from that goal and kind of cements this property for the next fifty years or however long in a purely auto-oriented fashion. And we do not need to do that. So there are significant and real safety, um, considerations that go along with that. So the World Health Organization, uh, acknowledges that or recognizes that amongst young people, uh, traffic deaths are one of the highest causes of mortality. So that's a real factor. So as we are trying to blend different modes of transportation in the core of our downtown, uh, there are significant trade-offs that come with that. Uh, so even though, uh, we're very grateful for our relationship with the Fire Department and we work very well with them, um, and so we were able to work out an access compromise for this site, uh, prior to the moratorium going into effect. But that still represents a compromise and it's not necessarily the ideal and best use from our perspective for how this site should be used and how this site should be accessed. We believe that, um, in certain parts of our city, so downtown specifically, there should be land use controls that help move us in a different direction because how the land develops is actually half of our transportation system. That represents half of how we get around. Uh, because if we don't develop in a way that allows and encourages us to walk, use public transportation, ride our bikes, if we don't develop in that way, it doesn't matter if we build the sidewalk or provide the, the transit route, which is very expensive, or provide even the bike lanes, if we don't develop destinations in that way, then we're not gonna walk to those places. We're not gonna bike to those places. So we feel like even though as a city, we are pro-car wash in the appropriate areas and in our downtown, we feel like it's very inappropriate and moves us in a direction we should not go. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions, additional questions for Mr. Director Fowler, for Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Director Fowler. You mentioned earlier that there was a compromise or, so does, did that include the alley usage or what was the end result?
Uh, great question. So, um, ideally, we would like to see automobile traffic for uses come in and off of alleys in our downtown. So de-prioritize access to and from our main streets, which cuts across the sidewalks, um, which cuts across, you know, our transit routes and our bike lanes and near our bus stops. So there's a lot of activity on our street faces. So specifically downtown, we want to eliminate curb cuts as much as possible. Uh, so our initial, uh, proposal was to provide access to and from the alley, and that works for a lot of development cases. Uh, in this case, that did not work for our partners in the Fire Department. And so, um, with a lot of really good discussion with them, we arrived at something that we felt like was an appropriate compromise. So kind of a narrower driveway on university. We don't love it, but we also didn't have the moratorium at that time. And so because that land use was allowed, uh, felt like that was where we needed to land. So, um, even though we worked out a compromise, it's still not necessarily the preferred land use and access configuration.
One other question. Are you in agreement with the developers' numbers that they gave for the traffic that goes along and how people go in and out of car washes? I know we've had people present to us before. It's like, I don't, I'm just not driving and then I see a car wash. Typically, I'm, I leave on my way to the car wash, so I know which way I'm gonna turn. So, um, how much traffic is on that street every day?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I will say that, um, with traffic studies generally, uh, they're taken at a site-by-site basis. And so they typically only add an incremental amount of new traffic. And so when you take each site, even if it's a five-hundred-home neighborhood development, if you just take that site and you add that to the overall capacity of the network, it might add one percent of traffic, you know, some very marginally no, uh, low number. And so that's how traffic studies quite frequently show that they're not having much of an impact on the overall system. But the problem is that when we do that in aggregate across this site and this site and this site and this site and this site, uh, all through our downtown, all through our major corridors, it does accumulate, uh, into congestion. So I don't necessarily disagree with any of the technicalities of specifically what their site might create in terms of traffic and demand on the system. But I do think that the citywide moratorium, so that we can look at our styles of development and how car washes fit in, is appropriate because if we double down and reinforce that style of development, um, we will have congestion and we will work against walkability and public transportation and cycling. And so, um, to your point about the traffic study, I don't think I disagree with any of their specific numbers, specific to their site. This style of development should not be in our downtown.
Thank you.
I have a, a question for Attorney King. So Attorney King, um, we're, you know, the, the city's in active litigation, um, relative to this moratorium and, um, have questions about how this particular case, you know, may impact, uh, the ongoing litigation. So, um, I don't think that we can discuss that in the context of a public hearing, but I do have questions.
Well, so it's based off of my recommendation that we go into executive session just under thirty-six twenty-five A seven A three to discuss pending litigation.
We have a motion for executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say, uh, our clerk, Ms. Clark?
Councilmember Clark. I'm sorry, Councilmember Moore? Come back to you. Oh, I missed you, I'm sorry. Councilmember Smith. All right. Councilmember Tate. Uh, Councilmember Woods. Okay. Council President, Portim Alexander? Council President, O'Quinn?
All right, all right. All right, we will reconvene at the call of the chair.